On the.
Good evening.
Have a good night, guys.
Putting my job.
I'll sit down. I don't know the name.
And she just.
Maybe we should have lunch.
But also.
Yeah, so there's.
But there is a way to preserve.
I don't know.
Yeah, you want as many URLs, make it easier.
It's probably just the conversions from a PDF to PDF. And also probably differences. Oh, I get it. You gotta have a nice presentation.
Yes.
That's what they're looking for. Yeah.
You guys are probably one of the first. So. I share this for you. Put it in the browser. And then I'll just say. Use the arrow keys. If you need help. Yes. If you need help. We watched the whole thing. So. Hey.
That's up to the chair. I'm just everybody, yes. That's the same like. But. Now. Short or better. So there's. Very spacious people in the back of the engine. Sorry. The other ones. Not very long, I guess. I don't know. So I want to turn in my truck. First time. Thirty nine months. Because the doc never got off. Because I have.
That's interesting. Interesting. I'm gonna talk. Once proceed.
I call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone in the room. Welcome everyone at home. This is the Bangor School Committee Regular Meeting. Today is Wednesday, May twenty fourth. It is seven PM. So we'll go ahead and get started. If you please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance.
Thank you so much. So we have recognitions and we have the State of Maine National History Day First Place Winners. Superintendent Tager.
Yes, it's my pleasure to the Bangor School Department and the Bangor School Committee will recognize the National History Day Contest Winners. High school and two middle schools support students who engage in independent research in history through participation in National History Day Contest. Students develop independent research projects in a variety of categories which are scored by expert judges. Winners at the state level are invited to compete in the National History Day National Competition held in June. We are pleased to share that sixth grader Zoe Jamison from William S. Cohen School won first place in the individual exhibit category for her project Claudette Colvin, The Girl Who Changed the World. Four students from Bangor High School took first place in various categories. Caroline Sada and Kate Busco won first place in the Senior Group Documentary Category for the short film Mr. Cleans Water Act, A New Frontier in Environmental Legislation. Anna Noack and Gigi Sichters took first place in the Senior Group Website Cat- Category for their project Into the Jungle, The Unintended Frontier That Paved the Way to Food Safety. If you would all come up, shake hands with the school committee members, we'd like to take a picture.
Congratulations. Let's put. Did you want to put you all right in the middle? And if parents want to take pictures, that'd be great. And I'm going to deliver certificates to the schools.
And do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
No adjustments.
Next, we have public comments. And just as a reminder. Members of the public may address the school committee for up to three minutes on school and education matters. Public comments shall be directed to the school committee and be brief and not repetitive. The school committee's practice is not to respond or debate with speakers during the public comment period. We are here to listen. The superintendent or his staff will follow up on comments outside of the meeting as appropriate. The committee will not permit profanity or shouting and request that speakers be civil. Discussion of specific personnel or student matters and complaints concerning specific employees or students will not be allowed, but will be addressed through established policies and procedures. Before speaking, we encourage speakers to review school policy AC, which provides that the committee does not and will not discriminate nor tolerate discrimination against students or employees on the basis of memberships in a protected class. Speakers who share comments contrary to this policy will not be allowed to continue. Before starting, as always, please state your name and place of residence. And do we have any public comments tonight? Please come forward.
Is this on? Make sure that the green button is on. I'm Sherri Hunter. I live here in Bangor. I have a son that goes to Bangor High. Loves it. Is there seventy-five percent of the time? We had an issue last week, as you've heard. Well, there's concerns, security concerns. One, a teacher should never direct when you have a lockdown in place. You have a child, children there. You do not send them away to their homeroom. You don't know where the danger is. This group of children were sent away. So of course they ran into the hallways, look in. What happens? Homeroom teachers, they did their jobs. They locked the door. They did their jobs. But these kids were stuck. Okay, where do we go? They found a room. They went in, shut the door, can't lock it. Keys teachers only have. So what do you do next? Barricate. How can you barricade a door that goes into the hallway? Now they're panicking. They're in trouble. They're hearing screaming in the hallways because more kids are sent. Security needs to be a big issue here. It needs to be trained with staff and the students constantly. I've had twenty-seven years of training and it was in my head, red flag, red flag, red flag. It shouldn't happen. These kids were getting ready to break a window. My God, they cut themselves going through that window because that's how scared they were. They were ready until it was called off. But the point is. Needs to be done. Something needs to be done with the doors. I called, talked to the head security. And he said that my next step would be to you guys to see how we can get dead locks. So at least the students can lock the door. If the students do it because they want to be funny, you have a key to get back in. But you know, for safety, they didn't feel safe. And the only tool they had was the door. So that's what we need to do is fix these doors. And it's not Bangor High. It's Doughty, I found out. It's other school, Fairmount, Mary Snow, Garland Street. So it's not just our school district. It's probably a lot of schools here in Maine, but we start now before something happens. And I have heard the attitude, well, we live in Maine. It's not going to happen to us. We live in Maine. We all have school shootings here. Well, guess what? We just had a mass shooting, didn't we, a month ago? So think about it. It might come here and we don't know when, but we should be prepared. And these students were scared to death. And you're going to hear from some of them today, what they experience. But we got to make sure they have a tool. Is that my time?
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. Yeah, next.
Good evening. I'm Dawson. I'm a sophomore at Bangor High, and I was lucky. I was not one of the students that was trying to find a place to go, but I experienced pain, suffering, and just scared emotions on the other side of the door. My teacher, he got us into the room ASAP immediately. But as we hide and we start to barricade our door, or think about barricading our door, we hear screaming coming down the hall, and that scared a lot of us. Teacher looked at me and he said, quote, "I'm sorry, guys. I did not think we would have to come to this, but I'm about to take the screen out the window. You guys are going to run through the forest and I'll meet you on the other side in about ten minutes." A teacher should not have to say that to his students or any other personnel in the building for that matter. I am a student leader and I work on class and student council, and so public safety is for students and staff is a big concern of mine. It's one of my priorities. And I love the system that was put in place, the Sentijix, the button system. I think it works wonderfully, but I think it's like dominoes. If one thing falls, the rest of it's going to all come crumbling down. And that's what happened on that Wednesday morning, and a lot of people did a good job, but all it takes for one mistake. And that one mistake could have cost a dozen or more lives that morning. And what's sad is that more people would have came here tonight. I think I had about twenty more students and we had thirty parents probably that would have came tonight as well. But they were scared, scared of what people might think about what this board, what people in the school, they think a target might be put on their back for trying to speak out. And I don't want that. You know, this is a big issue. And voices of parents and students and staff for that matter should be heard. And I don't think we are going to stop fighting this issue until every single lock is changed and students and staff are trained more properly for situations such as this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Mackenzie Robson. I'm currently a sophomore at Bangor High School, and I came to this meeting tonight to state my concerns and to get mine and other students' voices heard. As we all know, last Wednesday, we had our accidental lockdown at seven fifty-two AM. It was a normal morning. A few of my friends and I were in between lockers near our first period class as if nothing was wrong. Until I saw a teacher mind storm out their hallway, grabbing every student that they could out of the hallway. Our school just installed the new lockdown protocol system, and we went through a field, a few drills a few weeks prior. Of course, knowing what was in store for us during the drill, we knew what to do without any chaos. And without being, and with being able to hear the instructions over the speaker, the last Wednesday, no one knew what to do. No one knew what was happening. Or nor saw the system doing its job and alerting us until we are all corralled into a close, into the closest classroom. All my friends and I were hiding in between desks. There was a bunch of students who had zero notification of what was taking place into their school. This placed in the cafeteria. Everyone was going on with their morning until a courageous teacher ran out into the unknown and screamed at everybody and took them into safety. The unfeeling, the uneasy feeling of the unknown wafted over us all that morning, not knowing if we will make it back home. Hearing some of the students run down the hallways, banging on doors and begging to be let into rooms made so surreal. Knowing some were too late to find safety, some took their last resorts and hidden lockers and also into the bathrooms. For some of the students who found an empty classroom after being denied entry into another classroom, and I quote, "Go to your first period classroom." Tried everything they could to protect themselves from the, from the potential intruder. They tried barricading themselves into a classroom where the door could not lock and opens into the hallway instead of the class. Imagine getting that dreadful text message from your child at seven fifty-seven AM saying, "We are in lockdown. I don't know what's going on. There's no gunshots yet. I am on the first floor by a window. I will be okay and I love you." No parent, grandparent, or guardian should ever receive those messages. But not only am I here today to make my fellow classmates and I feel safer, I'm here to try my absolute hardest to make sure my sister will be safe when she enters your school into the coming years, if she ever has to face the inevitable. Tonight, I do have a few concerns. What steps will you take as a school to protect us in a time of distress? Will we ever have a nonroutine lockdown to better prepare our fellow students and staff? And will you change your system to where students can actually hear and see the alerts that are supposed to help us protect ourselves? And how will you, as a school, improve and better our systems and protocols to make us safer for me and the classes to come?
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alexis King, and I am currently a junior attending Bangor High School. Before the lockdown, me and two friends were in one of the locker bays across from one of the largest classrooms in the school. The announcement sounded like a mumbling coming from one of the other locker bays. There were teachers running in the hallways to get kids in classrooms because they could tell nobody could hear the alarm. A teacher pulled us into a classroom and a few other students. We had to hold the blinds shut so nobody could see from outside, even though we were perfectly seen through the windows inside and because they were not covered by anything. A teacher put herself in between the doors that were inside. So she could not be seen at all. There were kids screaming, crying, banging on the doors, trying to be let in. All of us were thinking it was a school shooting, not just a medical emergency. How are kids going to know about a school had emergency in this? In the morning before school and during school, transitioning from classrooms when there aren't any alarms of the hallways, bathrooms, or locker rooms. I understand it was a scary moment, but if teachers are going to have something, then maybe they could have a little bit of training or possibly connect with other teachers to try and help. It wasn't just scary for the teachers who were dealing with emergency. It was very traumatizing for every single kid who was scared, crying with their friends, thinking that someone in the school was shooting people. They were texting their parents that they loved them and might never be able to see them again because of a mistake like this. Another thing is when next time, maybe parents can be informed quicker than two and a half hours later. And maybe there can be improvements on the glass, so it's a one-way window. So people can't see from outside in, but kids can see outside. So they feel a little bit safer in school.
Other public comments?
Stephanie Nobles. I have two stepsons at Bangor High. I have lost a child. It's taken five minutes for the Sandy Hook killer to kill twenty-eight students. Are we going to stand here and just let that happen to our community and our school? I cannot even imagine how scared they were. And I cannot imagine losing another child. And I cannot imagine losing another child. And I hope, and I hope that you guys will listen to them and see that we need changes in these schools, not just Bangor High, but all of them. We need to protect our children and our staff who also provides a great education for them. I want to thank you guys for listening to everybody and understanding how much of a concern this is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? Okay. Alrighty. Thank you so much. Thank you for your heartfelt comments. Those myself. Okay. So we move on to superintendent's proposals and updates. We have no action items, correct?
Correct.
Correct, okay. So informational items, we have an update of the humanities trips.
Yes, Stephanie Hendricks and her students will provide an update on the humanities trip.
I'm gonna fix my slides.
Here it comes.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, friends. I am Stephanie Hendricks. This is year nineteen in the Bangor School Department with me. The first year out of nineteen of my years in the school department that we have been able to accomplish the feat of international travel with students as part of our educational programming. I'm also the coordinator of the Humanities Academy and I am so excited to be here tonight to talk to you about the travel opportunity that we shared with students this la, and parents this last April vacation. We traveled with thirteen students, six parents, and three chaperones to Spain and Portugal. Not our initial intended destination, but an amazing travel opportunity nonetheless. Of the students who traveled, we were able to provide one full scholarship and several partial scholarships for students who were traveling with us. And I would really like to thank several local businesses who helped us make that happen, including Maple Lane Sugary, Lynette Pottle, Pepsi, Farmhouse Coffee Roasters, the Collins Center for the Arts, Sea Dog Brew Pub, Penob Scott Theater, Portland Pie Company, Bangor Symphony Orchestra, the Maine Discovery Museum, The Rockin Art Shop, Frank's Bakery, Governors, Chick-fil-A, Brook Trout Designs, Waterfront Concerts, April de Tizzle, Mason's Brewing Company, Resource Geological Services, Love to Gift Gifts, Robinson Ballet, Bangor High School Athletics, Brandy Leroy, and would also love to give some special thanks to our really big donors, the Cross Family, Bangor Savings Bank, Epic Management, and several private and anonymous donors who helped us make this trip possible. Without their support, it might not have happened as well as it did for all of the students who were able to travel. I hope some of you followed along with our journeys on our Facebook page curated by our social media maven, Ms. Leroy, who was spectacular. I want to share a few highlights with you of the trip. So one of the things that people said about this vacation is that was a, it was an educational tour and not a vacation. And that became clear not only as we saw sights, as we interacted with local guides, but even as we took some rather long bus rides moving from Portugal into Spain. Students were able to ask questions and interact with our tour director. Some of the things that they were interested in knowing and that we were able to talk about include questions like, what are some Spanish cultural beliefs about familial relationships? How did Spain respond to COVID? What does Spain think about the conflict in Ukraine? How do Spaniards view Americans? Can you talk about the pilgrimages in Spain? Are schools divided the same as in the United States? Can you discuss religion and religious tensions in modern Spain? And tell us more about bullfighting. All of those questions led to some really powerful conversations and illustrated the fact that the Humanities Academy is a truly interdisciplinary experience that braids together multiple content areas, including English Language Arts, History, Social Sciences, and the World Languages. One quote that came out of a post-travel survey said, "I don't have a favorite thing or place. It was all so incredible. I guess it was the collective experience that I loved." And out of that collective experience, the trip put the size and scope of world history and culture in perspective. We got to see Vasco da Gama's tomb. We got to see Christopher Columbus's tomb. We talked about the age of exploration and the consequences of imperialism and colonialism on a global scale. We saw cathedrals that had been converted into mosques. We saw mosques that had been converted into cathedrals. We saw synagogues that had been converted into cathedrals. And we talked about the history of global religion and the links between culture and religion. One of the places we saw was Lisbon, Portugal. All of the photos that you see in the word art were taken in the places that we saw. People said of the trip, "It forced me to expand my horizons and work outside of my comfort zone in a foreign country." Some students, this was their first trip out of the United States. They were converting currency. They were visiting post offices and sending mail in a foreign country. They were trying to navigate Spanish language skills in a country where they were not quite as proficient as the folks who spoke it. There were lots of things that were happening for these students for the first time that helped them grow in independence in a really remarkable way. We saw Evra and the chapel of bones there was really a powerful place. It was a chapel that had been decorated with human bones to illustrate the fact that we're only here for a certain time and that we need to take advantage of every moment that we have so that we can build empathy and see the world and take chances. We were in Seville where we saw some really beautiful things. People said some of the things I learned was about how religion shaped practically everything and how difficult life was in earlier times and still is in many ways. I think living in New England, we're used to being surrounded by old things. This trip gave students a brand-new conception of what it means for something to be old. In Cordoba, we had some wonderful experiences. People said, "I cannot stress how impactful experiential learning is. I was transported into an unfamiliar, uncomfortable place and I was pushed to learn about it. There's nothing more exhausting and nothing more rewarding than that." Students had a flamenco dancing lesson. And then we got to see the show performed and watch them do the same steps that we had learned earlier. One of the songs in that show came from the opera Carmen, which students had learned about and seen as part of our Metropolitan Opera Partnership that the Humanities takes advantage of. It was really a remarkable experience. I won't read all of the quotes because we do have some folks here who can speak to the experience. I'll turn the microphone over to them as well. Toledo was a very big hit. You might not know it. This is where they made all of the swords for Lord of the Rings. We got to visit a sword shop. Several people purchased swords. My nine-year-old was very happy to get a Spanish steel sword for his birthday when we got home. And, and I can't say enough about the amazing group of people. I could not, you know, I was, I was very nervous taking this trip because I was taking other people's children to another country. And that is, I have children of my own. People say of motherhood that it's like your heart walking around outside of your body. I was entrusted with other people's hearts. I was very nervous about that, but I could not have imagined a better group of people to travel with. We had each other's backs. The chaperones, we all worked together as a team. Things just went so incredibly well and I can't imagine a better group of people to have shared our time with. Madrid was our final stop. And over the course of our whole journey, geography teacher Brandy Leroy made a model project that we're hoping to use in future years. So I'm hoping that you'll talk a little bit about that. Can we, hold on, we're gonna hit escape and we're gonna jump over to... I can do this. We got this. This, nope.
There we go, and then you can scroll on. Okay.
Hi, everyone. So anyone who knows me knows that GIS is my absolute obsession. And it has been my goal in all of my eight years of learning about GIS and teaching with GIS to bring GIS into like every discipline. So this is hopefully a way that we can bring it into humanities. This is an ArcGIS story map that I created as an exemplar. We're hoping that from here on out, the students can create their own when they come back from the trip. So, maybe. So, all of the images on here are images that I took while we were on the trip. This was a bullfighting arena that we went and saw. We didn't actually go see a bullfight, luckily. But we got to go and see the architecture. I teach AP Human Geo. I had four of my AP Human Geo students with me on the trip. They got to review by just experiencing everything on this trip, including the architecture and the culture. So we started at Bangor International Airport. We had a twelve-hour layover in New York City. And EF was amazing. They got a bus for us so that we could go out and explore the city. And some of the students had never been even to New York City. They were rolling across the pond. So it was wonderful to get them out into the city. From there, we went to Lisbon, or Lisboa, as they say there. Evora, Seville, Cordoba, Toledo, and then Madrid. So you can see the path of our journey with the story map. So we started in New York. And we got to go out, walk on Broadway. We got to see Times Square. We got to spend the afternoon walking around Central Park. And then we geared up for an overnight flight across the ocean. And when we hit the ground in Lisbon, it was eight o'clock in the morning. However, for us, it felt like it was three. And everybody wanted a nap because you know how it is to sleep on a plane, but nope, we hit the ground running. So this is Nico. He was our tour director. And he became some of the kids' absolute best friend. It was amazing to watch the the way that the kids connected with him. And by the end of the trip, like everybody gave him hugs, even kids who weren't huggers were giving him hugs, saying goodbye to him. It was amazing. He took a lot of our students on our discovery time out for tapas. And the only rule was that they couldn't order. He ordered. So they would actually go out and try all of these different cuisines that they normally wouldn't. And they were begging to go with him by the end of it. So these are some of the places in Lisbon that we got to experience. We got to see Bellum Tower, St. Geronimo's Monastery, the Monument of Discoveries. We got to walk around the city. And it was just absolutely amazing. We went down to Bellum Tower. There was a guy playing the violin on the beach and it was just magical. We got to learn about cork. Cork is the largest export in Portugal. And it comes from a tree. Lots of the students brought back little cork bags to give to their family members or to keep for themselves. So we got to see some of the cork trees. And then we got to go and experience Evora on our way into Spain. My favorite of all the places we went was Seville. I am a Star Wars geek, so Nabu is Seville. So we got to go and go to the Plaza de España, which is Nabu. And we got to see all of these other cultural places. We got to go to the Palace of the Alcazars, which had a lot of Muslim architecture throughout it. We got to learn about how the Muslims came in and had control of Spain and then the Catholics took over, how they converted all of these churches. We got to go to flamenco. And this is what I want you all to see the most. We pushed people out of their comfort zones and they just excelled. Cordoba. We got to go to the cathedral. It used to be the largest mosque in the world until it was converted over to a cathedral. Or sorry, the second largest mosque in the world. And then this is Toledo. And you can just see how close these kids are when you look at the pictures. There's just a family that was created throughout the week. We learned about sequin occupation, how cultures come in and then other cultures come in and take over. And then finally, Madrid, we got to go to the Spanish Palace and tour the palace. We got to learn about bullfighting and how it is a very controversial topic in Spain, even though they still do it every Sunday in the spring. But there's a lot of organizations that believe that it is cruel. And we got to go to the Prado Museum. And some of these pictures I was not supposed to take, but I didn't know until they yelled at me. So the kids got to go and do a scavenger hunt at the Prado Museum and learn more about the art that they saw, you know, some very famous pieces of art like Caravaggio's David and Goliath. And the food. The experiences with food that the students had that we had was just absolutely amazing. We got to end with a pie dinner where students got some tapas. And some of them were not things that you normally would eat, like calamari. You know, we don't typically eat calamari a lot here, but everybody seemed to embrace it and tried everything. And it was absolutely delicious. So thank you all. It was wonderful. It was a great experience for the students and the grownups alike.
And I think we have a few of them here tonight who want to speak to that experience. Thank you. We'll let Caroline go first and then turn it over to the parent. A lot of our other students wanted to be here tonight, but there's a lacrosse game and there's a track and field event. There are others, and dance that they are already committed to, so we're glad.
Yes, the student voice, okay. So this trip was really life-changing. I think all of the students agreed that they really learned something from this. And there were definitely challenges because we had to adjust to a new time zone. A lot of students had never used international currency before. There were just a lot of like little things you don't think about in everyday life that students really had to reevaluate and see how other countries do it differently. I think I'll talk a little bit more about like the structure of the trip. So we certainly had tours around like historical landmarks and we went to museums. But there were also times when we could have free time and we split off into smaller groups, which I thought was very valuable. Because, you know, sometimes being in a large group is overwhelming and you don't want to be with the same people all the time. So if you can split off into a smaller group, you each have your own experiences that you bring back together and share with each other. And so this happened a lot of the time around lunch and we also had time to explore the cities that we were in. And I think all the students had their own memories that they made with other people and with funny situations that happened. And everyone had good exposure to a variety of different things. So I'm really excited that the Humanities Academy is doing it because because it really shows the interdisciplinary track of a lot of things in our lives. And if this could persuade more students to join humanities classes, that would be really valuable because I personally believe humanities is one of the strongest subjects that you can learn about because it's about the human experience and we're all human. So it's necessary to study that and have experience that's outside of your comfort zone. If any of the parents would like to speak, I invite them.
Hi. I'm Mike Sada. I'm Caroline's dad. Bangor resident for 34 years, parent with students in Bangor School System, 22 years. This is my last one, so I'm pretty excited. As a parent, I've always tried to give back to each of my kids to participate in something near the end of the year. I did a, I was a a adult, I don't know if they'd call it a chaperone at the time, on a school trip to Washington DC where they had the chorus and the band and the orchestra all participate in various events. It was quite an experience. I learned a lot about being a responsible parent or a chaperone because there's a lot of things you have to look out for. Second, there was sports with my middle child and I did a lot of work with the teams there trying to support that. So when this came up, it was Peru and I have 30 years of safety experience. I'm a professional, safety professional. I'm a certified safety professional. And I have a lot of experience in emergency management. Won't talk about that too much tonight because I know you guys have things to talk about. But I wanted to be there to make sure that there was a safe environment for the students. And at the time, it wasn't known that they would have a good ratio between parents or adults and chaperones and students. So I volunteered. And when it switched to Spain, my daughter encouraged me to continue on and continue with the trip so we could share the experience. So some things I observed that made it educational, which you won't hear about in the slideshows and probably from the teachers, is the Nico, the tour director who was embedded with us the entire time. He was giving them tips, like a dad or mom would give tips to students when they travel. Be careful of pickpockets. Watch out for these ATMs. They charge you way too much. He led them through this before letting them navigate the city and do these things on their own, in groups, of course. The other thing that I thought that doesn't relate to the trip, which I found very exciting for experiential learning, was students were reaching out to all these wonderful donors to ask for things. They were doing it. That's a great skill. They learned what no meant. They learned what yes meant. They'd learned how to write thank you. I mean, that's stuff you don't hear about with slideshow and everything, but I want to make sure you guys heard about that. Because I think that experiential thing is very important for this, sorry, experience that's going on with travel. I hope we can continue to do this for all the other students. And it's nice that there were people willing to help support students who couldn't afford it because I would do that myself if I could. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name's Jennifer Eastman. My daughter Evangeline is a senior. She goes by Cricket. Cricket couldn't be here tonight because she's at her last away lacrosse game in the rain. I'm sure she's having a fine time. I told her to just channel her inner Taylor and just play her best in the rain with a smile on her face and gratitude for the experience. But so I'm here on my own behalf and on hers as well to express our gratitude for the experience. Not gonna lie, I was disappointed we weren't going to Peru. I was really looking forward to that, but I understood exactly why that had to change. And at the end of this, I can't speak highly enough about our experience in the trip. You've heard all of the details and lots of input and I don't have too much to add to that. Other than I, for, I don't, I don't think I've ever been in a mosque before. I know my daughter has not been in a mosque before. I know my daughter's never been in a synagogue before. Those were experiences embedded in that culture that will be with us forever. Cricket is in the humanities program. She's in Brandy's Human Geography class. She's also taking an AP Art History class through the University of Maine. It was amazing to me how we would see things and visit things. And she would say, oh yeah, this is this. We learned about this in humanities class or we learned about this in human geography. And at the Prado, there was a whole exhibit of Goya paintings that she's been studying in APR history and to see those in person was just an incredible experience for her. It's an expensive trip. It really, it's an investment. But it's something that absolutely I think the school, the school community, the school board should be invested in. To bring this experience to high school students in Bangor, Maine, a fairly rural area, many of whom have never been out of the state, much less the country. And to give them the kind of supportive community to have this sort of out-of-body, out-of-country experience, I think is unparalleled. All of that said, the main reason that I really wanted to be here tonight was to nominate Stephanie Hendricks for St. Hood because she is just phenomenal. The work that she did in putting this program together and organizing the fundraising for it and trying to organize all of this information that was coming at us from EF tours. There were several nights on our trip where she had other Zoom meetings here. So she was up half the night there to be on a Zoom meeting here and then up before I was the next morning, dressed and ready to go. Her energy never failed. Just a phenomenal job. It would not have been the same without her. And also my deep appreciation to the other faculty members who went with us. When they spoke about the kind of tight-knit group, it was beyond my expectation. The children were amazing, that they were just this great group. There was, there was no infighting. There was no cliques. They would all eat dinner in different groups and do things in different groups. It's not what I expected on a high school trip. And it spoke so highly of our Bangor school community and of the faculty who take care of them every day. But so thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you so much. That was fabulous.
I just want to end with one last plug to make sure that you mark your calendars. Travel isn't the only thing humanities does. These students are scholars and you all should have received invitations for our capstone event on the evening of May 31st. These students are going to be presenting research projects that they've been working on for one or two years, depending on when they entered our program. And in addition to all of these amazing things, I hope that you will be able to come see the other remarkable academic work that these students have been doing and the way that they are going to change our world for the better. Thank you so much.
I have a quick question and sign me up for next year.
Next year, France, Germany, and Switzerland.
But in all seriousness, what would you change, if anything? What is one thing that you learned through this trip that you could improve upon or maybe change for next year?
So I actually have a list. I was keeping a list on my phone of things on the trip as we were going. And then I gave a pretty intensive feedback forum to students and the parents, not just the parents who traveled, but the parents whose students traveled too, to find some things out. One thing is that our nurse at school, Heather Haskins, did an amazing job putting together a first aid kit for me that included an EpiPen and all sorts of really great stuff. We definitely need more Imodium and some allergy medication over the counter to come with us. That stuff was really important and is something that is on my list for next time. And a big piece of feedback was starting the fundraising earlier because while the trip is worth every single penny, it is an investment. And so to that end, we have the Darling's Ice Cream Truck visiting on the last day of school at Bangor High School. So students can celebrate with an ice cream and support our travel journeys. And we also have Bar Harbor Bank and Trust that is sponsoring us. If you're going to Dave Matthews Band at the waterfront concerts, please park at the Bar Harbor Bank and Trust parking lot because all of the proceeds for that parking will go to benefit Humanities Travel. So we have, I've taken all of those suggestions and put them in lists and started putting some of them in action right now. Last but not least, because I know we have some runners in the audience, we have a fundraiser with Got Sneakers. If you have athletic footwear, sneakers that you are ready to get rid of, please bring them to the high school, to Ms. Leroy or to me. And we will not only save the planet by making sure that those used sneakers do not end up in landfills. Come listen to Ellie Nichols' Humanities Capstone presentation to learn about that. But we also get money for every pair of recycled sneakers. So all of, all of that is stuff that we have going on and all of that has been implemented as we have taken feedback and been reflective about what worked and what didn't work.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
We're extremely proud of all this work. So any other questions or comments? No? Okay, excellent. Thanks again. So we move on to report of reassignments for school year 2023, 2024.
Thank you, Chair. I'm reporting the following teacher reassignment for the school year 2023, 2024. Barbara Clulley, from grade two teacher at Downey School to grade one teacher at Downey School.
Thank you. Next, we have report of resignations.
I'm reporting the following resignations. Brian Bannon, principal, 14th Street School. Carolyn DeRoche Turner, grade seven ELA teacher, William S. Cohen School. Katie Roberts, science teacher, Bangor High School. Courtney Reader, special education teacher, Bangor Regional Program. Carolyn Seguin, grade one teacher, Downey School. Erica Griffin, pre-K teacher, 14th Street School. Maynard Walton, grade seven, eight math teacher, James F. Doughty School. Chelsea L. Low, girls B soccer coach, James F. Doughty School. Matthew O'Connell, boys A basketball coach, James F. Doughty School.
Thank you. We move on to business action items. The first action item is the minutes for the regular meeting of May 10th, 2023.
I'm recommending approval of the draft minutes of the May 10, 2023 Regular School Committee Meeting.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
All in favor.
Passes five zero. Thank you.
Next, we have financial reports, June 2022 audited financial report.
I'm recommending approval of the audited June 2022, June 2022 financial report.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Second. Any questions or discussion on that one? All in favor.
Passes five zero. Thank you.
Next, we have March 2023 financial report.
I'm recommending approval of the March 2023 financial report.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Any questions? No, all in favor.
Passes five zero.
Next, we move on to personnel. We have nominations of a teacher.
I'm recommending the following teacher nominations for the 2023, 2024 school year with a one-year probationary contract. Kara Schwartz, library and media specialist, William S. Cohen School. Savannah Haas, grade six teacher, William S. Cohen School. Kristin McNeil, special ed teacher, Downey School.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor.
Passes five zero.
Thank you. Next, we have second reading of new and revised policies. And if we can take all of those together, please, that would be great.
Recommending second reading of the new and revised policies. Revised Policy GCBA I Tutor Compensation Guide. Revised Policy GDB V Lunch Aid Compensation Guide. Revised Policy GDB VI Executive Office Compensation Guide. Revised Policy GDB VII Support Staff Compensation Guide. Revised Policy GDB VIII Adult and Community Education Compensation Guide. Revised Policy GDB IX Supplemental Compensation Guide. Revised Policy GDB X Educational Technology Staff Compensation Guide. Revised Policy BDDH Public Participation at School Committee Meetings.
Motion, please.
Second.
Any questions or discussion on any of them? All in favor.
Passes five zero. Thank you.
Next, committee updates. First, do we have any comments or questions from the committee? Member Mendel.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. First of all, thank you for that incredible presentation from the Humanities Academy. I had two kids go to Bangor High School and there are three academies and they neither of them picked humanities and I was really bummed. Because that's the one I would have picked. It's, it sounds like you guys are just doing a phenomenal job. And the trip, I had talked with member Sada when she got back and she said she told me it was life-changing. And so thank you for initiating that and I, I hope it can continue. I also wanted to thank the advisors of the Q plus Club for bringing in, they've started a speaker series and they brought in actor Dominic Varney a couple of weeks ago. And I heard great things about the presentation and I appreciate the the bringing in of other voices for our kids to hear. And I wanted to congratulate Mr. Bannon for, well, I don't know if congratulations are in order. I will say that I'm sad that you're leaving and I appreciate what you've brought to the schools and I wish you the best of luck. I'm also sad to hear that Katie Roberts is resigning. She's been a real mentor to my son and she got the robotics team up and running again and that was really a life-changing experience for him and a lot of the kids. So I'm very sad about that, but I wish her the best of luck in whatever she's doing next.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? No? And I will also, Mr. Bannon, he's been such a wonderful force for the schools and our department and he will be greatly missed. Huge, huge asset. Next, we move on to committee appointments and representatives reports. Do we have any? Member Mendel.
Yeah, the Mental Health Committee met on Monday. And essentially this year for the Mental Health Committee, the objective was to sort of sit back and kind of monitor what we implemented last year and see how those projects are unfolding. The implementation of the PBIS program was the main thing that I think is new this year and training is ongoing. So we got a report back from Director Babbin about that program. We talked about next year, the, the results from the main Integrated Youth Health Survey will be coming out probably in October. So right now, we're really excited to get that data. We've never had that data before. And I think what the Mental Health Committee has decided is that we're gonna wait until we get that data back to take a look at it. It's going to tell us a lot about what our needs are and where we need to put our efforts next year. So that's where we are.
Thank you, Member Mendel. Other committee reports? And I just wanted to give a quick shout out to my amazing colleagues. We had a phenomenal retreat yesterday at Camp Jordan, which was, and it was a gorgeous day, so it was perfect. We went over the strategic plan and had wonderful discussions and conversations about our path forward. And so that was wonderful. And it's always, you know, a bonding experience and getting to know your school committee member. So that was wonderful and many thanks to Superintendent Tager for his leadership and allowing us to have those types of retreats. Next, actually, we have a student committee member update, but before I allow you to do that, I have a few words for you. So this is Member Sada's last school committee meeting, which is really sad for us. She graduates this year and so I really wanted to take a few minutes to express our gratitude and our appreciation for her time and service as the first ever student committee member on the Bangor School Committee. And I'm glad your father is here today because you have done a phenomenal job. It was, it's been such an honor and pleasure to have you here with us. Students are the primary stakeholders in an education system and it's really important to include them in this democratic process. Their student voices and serving as a liaison between school and board is extremely valuable to us. And I believe, and I think I can speak on everyone's behalf, that you've served that role with the utmost confidence, eloquence, boldness, and integrity. You have really paved the way for committee member Dusblon and other diverse and strong student leaders to play a central role in all aspects of public education and student-driven transformational change. Again, you guys are our primary stakeholders and we're very proud of you and we're excited to, to include more student leaders. So thank you. And I pass it on to you to say a few words.
Yes, thank you. So I have to thank this committee for welcoming me to this new position. I was really thrilled to hear that this was being formalized, that a student representative would be on the board because to me, having the student engage with a process like this is important. It affects their lives and it affects the school. It affects their lives and it affects the school community. And I did not know what school committees did before I came here, so I'm, I've learned a lot. Um, and this committee works together so well. All of you are very respectful and passionate about the work that you do and it's really inspiring and I'm very grateful to have had this experience. Um, all of those kind words are very heartfelt and I appreciate bonding with the committee and getting to know all of you. So thank you for that. So. My final student update. Uh, tomorrow night and Friday night at six PM in Peak's Auditorium, the theater capstones are happening. There will be two one-act plays and, um, the students have been working tirelessly this week to get them done and ready for, um, showcase, so the public is invited. Um, as Ms. Hendricks mentioned, the Humanities Capstone Presentation is also next Wednesday, May thirty-first at six PM. Um, a lot of things are happening for seniors and a couple traditions that are coming up are on June sixth, there's the senior salute for seniors to show off their caps and gowns and, you know, get the first experience of graduation. June seventh, there will be an alma mater march for seniors to go to their old schools and have the younger kids see them in their, um, caps and gowns and, you know, be inspired and motivated. On June eighth, there will be the senior banquet for students to celebrate with their class and then June eleventh will be the official graduation. And for the rest of the school, things are not really winding down, but like rolling ahead towards final exams, um, which will begin the first week of June. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so much. Okay, and lastly, we have, um, informational items. We have several important dates. We have Wednesday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, seven PM, a regular meeting, seven PM here in council chambers. We have, uh, Wednesday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, our end-of-year recognition at Bangor High School at seven forty-five AM and school committee members are invited to that. Uh, Wednesday, June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, we have a joint workshop session with city council, five PM, uh, at Bangor High. I didn't realize it was at Bangor High. Um, and that is right before our meeting that same day at seven PM here in council chambers. And then, um, just to note that we had to move that July nineteenth meeting to Wednesday, July twelfth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting, seven PM, council chambers. So please make note of that if you have it, uh, already scheduled in your, uh, calendars. Um, final questions and comments from the committee?
One, one thing, um, Chair Houston, the joint meeting will be at Bangor High School at five so we can share with them the health clinic.
Oh, that's right.
So I think that might be a good thing.
Yes.
I know that we had something.
Thank you. Yes. Number Dusseblon.
Just from a student perspective, I just wanna, I kinda take a moment to recognize Caroline a little bit. I think I did a okay job of hiding it, but when Mr. Butler told me about this opportunity, I was terrified, honestly. So I was, I didn't know what to do. I just kinda said yes without thinking about it. I walked out. But, um, the moment I came in here, Caroline was very welcoming and she always made sure that I knew what to do and I hope if I next year do this job half as well as you have, I think I'll be happy with us. So thank you for everything and I know you're gonna do great things from you. So, thank you.
And we are, we're very, very confident that you will. Thank you. Okay. Oh, any final comment, question? No, seeing none. Um, adjournment. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Passes five zero. Thank you.